We're going to call to order the January 20th Franklin County Board of Commissioners meeting, roll call please.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer? Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Okay, if you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll have the invocation led by Pastor Dakota Smith of the Ottawa Bible Church. I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States-
And to the republic which stands-
One nation-
Under God-
Indivisible-
With liberty-
And justice for all. You're on Pastor Dakota.
All right, good morning y'all, thank you so much for having me. It's a joy and it's an honor to be here. I just wanted to say very quickly, I'm truly grateful for your service to our community, everyone who serves on the Franklin County Commissioners Board, just, we love you, we appreciate you. On behalf of Ottawa Bible Church, we would just like to let you know that we acknowledge the difficulty of these times and we thank you for your leadership. Truly, in the midst of that, we don't fully understand your shoes, but we are grateful that you are serving us where you're at, so thank you. I just wanted to take a brief moment, it is inauguration day, and I just wanted to speak in two different veins for about the next three minutes and also to pray. The first vein I'd like to speak on is the basic question of how we should pray for those in authority at this level. Paul tells us in First Timothy, chapter 2, verse 1, he says this, "Therefore I exhort first of all that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men." And then he goes on to say, "For kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and reverence; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all men," literally, "all kinds of men to be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth." So, Paul is exhorting Christians here that we should pray on behalf of our leaders, not just that they would have a sense of humility and justice and peace about them, but that the people that our leaders serve would also benefit from their leadership. The second thing, and this is just biggest on my heart, not only how we should pray, but really the aim of our hope, and as a Christian, I just want to peaceably and lovingly proclaim to you that I believe our hope should be in Jesus. I want to read three verses for you and then I'm going to close this out in prayer. The book of Isaiah, chapter 53, verses 4, 5, and 6, say this, "Surely our griefs he himself bore, and our sorrows he carried; yet we ourselves esteemed him stricken, smitten of God and afflicted; but he was pierced through for our transgressions, he was crushed for our iniquities. The chastening for our well-being fell upon him, and by his stripes we are healed." All of us, all of us like sheep have gone astray. Each of us has turned to his own way, but the Lord has caused the iniquity or the sin of us all to fall upon him. And the reason I read this passage in the book of Isaiah is because it's clearly talking about how Christ is being crucified, the words pierced and crushed is halal and dakka in the Hebrew, which are the too much violent terms you can think of in the Hebrew language. All of those things happened to him so that we as people could receive his shalom or his peace. But the interesting thing about Isaiah, chapter 53, is it was written in 702 B.C., which means 702 years, essentially before Christ even arrived on the scene, it was already speaking of him in this way. In 702 B.C., crucifixion didn't even exist yet. And there's about another 268 more prophecies of Christ that are just like this in the Old Testament. So, you know, as a Christian, we don't just place our hope in the Lord without evidence, what we're saying is, no, this is proof that Jesus is who he says he is, and he came to love the world, because everyone's got an issue with sin and with their own downfall. So, where I want to pray is one for our country and then us just to have humble hearts unto the Lord, and if, at the very least, for that to be a challenge for you to ponder today, the legitimacy of Jesus' love, so I'm going to do that right now. Lord, thank you so much for our Franklin County Commissioners, thank you that they care for us, that they love us, that they serve us, thank you for their wisdom, thank you for the great job, the excellent job that they've done thus far. We just ask you that you would continue to equip them and uphold them with your strong right hand for all the decisions that they are to make, that they would have a peace and a humility and justice about them. And then God, on a greater level, we also just pray for President Biden and Vice President Harris as they're inaugurated today, that they would possess the same qualities, help them to lead in peace, help them to lead with humility, help them to lead with justice, and may the American people benefit from their leadership. We just ask you, God, these things, in the name of your Son Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much Franklin County, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Pastor Smith.
Absolutely, God bless guys.
Okay, we do have a couple of items, correspondence and organizational business. The first one is to consider January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and we do have a proclamation, I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I think we have a couple of representatives of the Willow Domestic Violence Center who are going to receive the proclamation. The proclamation, 2101, first one of the year, reads, "Whereas human trafficking, a modern form of slavery, is one of the largest and fastest growing criminal industries in the world, it is based on recruiting, harboring, and transporting people for the purpose of exploitation. And whereas millions of men, women, and children around the globe, including here in Franklin County, Kansas, are subject to modern-day slavery, the cruel, inhumane practice of human trafficking. And whereas sex trafficking and labor trafficking occur in Kansas and both adults and children of any gender, socioeconomic status, age, race, sexual orientation, or geographic location can become victimized. And whereas human trafficking includes sexual, verbal, emotional, and physical abuse and exploitation, and all forms of abuse carry long-term, complex trauma implications. And whereas Kansas human trafficking laws define commercial exploitation of children, which does not require a showing of force, fraud, threat, or coercion, and references the existing statutory definition of human trafficking and aggravated human trafficking. And whereas the effects of human trafficking reach far beyond its victims and perpetrators, causing disruption in our schools, places of work, and neighborhoods. And now therefore Franklin County, Kansas proclaims the month of January 2021 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and urges all its citizens to speak out against sex and labor trafficking and exploitation, to support survivors of these heinous acts, crimes, to encourage community leaders to hold offenders accountable, and to make preventable efforts a priority by hosting events, by creating policies at work, school, and home, and by supporting and participating in programs designed to reduce and eventually eliminate human trafficking as a societal problem. Signed, this 20th day of January 2021." And I'm going to totally butcher your name, but I believe we have Martha Turhar from the Willow Domestic Violence Center.
Yes, and you did not butcher it, that was pretty good.
Good, thank you.
Thank you guys so much for having us here at this commission meeting and for allowing us to put this proclamation in front of the county commission. Human trafficking is a tricky subject and one that I think is unknown to a lot of people, and I think when we think of human trafficking, we think of some pretty stereotypical movies and sequences and just thinking of people being kidnapped and taken, and I think what the Willow would like to do is just bring more awareness and education to the fact that this is an issue and crisis that is going on in the Franklin County community currently, that a lot of people who are in human trafficking and are being trafficked are done so not by physical restraint. We see that a lot of people who are trafficked are done so by force, fraud, and coercion, and that their traffickers are building trusting relationships with them and bringing them in and trying to be their caretakers and winning them over in ways that make them feel like they're psychologically restrained, not physically restrained. And this happens in our communities, it happens in people's homes, traffickers can be family members, and we want to bring it up and we make it a part of our mission as the Willow because issues such as child abuse and sexual abuse and domestic violence are all precursors and issues that can make kids and adults be more vulnerable to human trafficking. So, we include it under our umbrella of services as the Willow because we acknowledge that it's all interconnected, and human trafficking is something that the more that we build awareness in our local community, the more our local community can be best prepared for it, educated and knowledgeable. And it takes all community members, not just the Willow, to notice these red flags and these signs of someone being trafficked and someone who needs help. And I think Franklin County is especially a place where this can happen because of I-35, so a lot of traffickers look for ways to transport people and kind of make them feel like they don't know where they are, and so having a main highway makes Ottawa and Franklin County a prime spot for people to have been trafficked or for traffickers to continue finding victims, and sometimes those victims can just be their own family members. So, it's a heavy topic and not one that's easy to talk about, but one that's important to talk about because we can't address issues of just domestic violence and sexual violence, we also have to address the issue of human exploitation and human trafficking because they're all connected together. So, we just really appreciate this opportunity to bring this to Franklin County and we appreciate the willingness for collaboration because we cannot do and provide our services without the help of everyone who's at this meeting and without the help of everyone in Franklin County. So, I just appreciate everyone for providing the space and continue to follow the Willow Domestic Violence's Facebook page, we have a lot of good educational content and some events for this Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And because of the pandemic, we are doing everything virtually, so it is accessible to everyone online and on our website. And thank you so much for giving us this space and time to share our mission with you guys.
Thank you very much, I see that there may be, there's a couple of other people from Willow on the line also?
Yes, we have our Director of Community Services, who's my boss, Taylor Jones, and then we have the Director of Survivor Access, which is Felix Rodriguez.
Awesome, well, welcome in, I didn't know if they had anything to share or if we were-
I will leave that up to them, I told them that I would say the piece for the Willow just so that we can not hold it up for you guys too much.
All right, well, we appreciate the work that you do in the community, I know it's one of those things that we wish, I think sometimes we would turn a blind eye and think that maybe it's not happening here, but unfortunately, I'm sure it is, and thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you so much, Ann.
Yeah, I would echo, I mean Martha did a wonderful job, and yeah, just to kind of echo and piggyback off that, that I, we appreciate the county's support in this mission, because again, the human trafficking is something that affects, you know, all populations and all communities, so we greatly appreciate the space and the acknowledgement of, you know, and the support from the community.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to our second item.
Hi, Ann.
I'm sorry, yes.
This is Janet, you need a motion in a second to approve the proclamation.
All right, we need a motion to approve the proclamation, do we have a motion?
This is Don, I'll make the motion.
This is Roy, second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
All right, we've approved that proclamation. Our next item of business is to receive a presentation on ECKAA and your report given by Elizabeth Maxwell, Director, welcome Elizabeth.
Thank you very much. Every year I come and kind of give you a summary of what our agency has done throughout the year. This year, I've also brought Leslie Rockers, she's been our Assistant Director, I'm retiring next week, so she will become the Director, so she will become your contact after next Friday, so she's with us too. In your packet, you should have received our 2020 year-end report, I put it together in the same format that we did for the last couple of years. We try to focus on little stories, which you can read at your convenience, about the services that we provided. This report is for our entire six county area, which is Anderson, Coffey, Franklin, Lynn, Miami, and Osage. The stories come, they're true stories, they're from all six of our counties. Our main effort is to serve people age 60 and over, any type of service that will help them stay in their home for as long as they possibly can without going to a nursing facility. In addition, we work with anyone who is on Medicaid, who is on either the frail elderly waiver, which is people age 65 and over, the physically disabled waiver, which is age 16 and over, and the traumatic brain injury waiver, which is age, from baby on up now since they changed the definition for traumatic brain injury. And then in addition, in Franklin, Osage, and Coffey counties, we also do the Intellectual and Developmentally Disabled Program, which is for people age 5 and over. So, while we focus on the elderly, we certainly do work with a lot of other age groups. So, a lot of the questions that people call in with just have to do in general with either Medicaid or what's happening in their lives, so we try to answer all those. The services that we provide range anywhere from a long-term service like providing housekeeping service, which can be cleaning your house, doing your laundry, doing grocery shopping for you. Attendant care is bathing, helping a person get dressed and ready for the day. We do respite care, which is for caregivers who just need a little time away because they're 24/7 caregivers, and they just need a little rest themselves. We do a lot of one-time services, which are things like building ramps or fixing a floor if it's unsafe for you, dentures, hearing aids, paying a utility bill, paying rent, buying insure, depends, basically anything that a person has a need for who's age 60 and over, we encourage them to call. We of course do the Meals Program, and that's what people are most familiar with, the Meals on Wheels Program, and Franklin County provides about 28% of all the meals that are served in our six county area. Our base is here, our kitchen is out in the industrial park, we are in the process of adding on a garage to house all of our vans out there through a grant that we received. So, if you go out in the industrial park, we've got some building going on and the drivers, our van drivers are very excited that they'll be able to get in out of the bad weather. In addition, of course, this year, we had to operate a little bit differently when the pandemic started, we did close our office to the public for a while, but then early summer, we opened it up again. We did some precautions, put the plexiglass up, we, you know, all the sanitation things that we do, but a lot of our people do have a need to just come in to talk to somebody, so that's what we do, everybody masks up, but that's how we're operating right now. We got federal disaster funds, which increase the amount of one-time services that we could give to people, so that was good for us. Franklin County was very good to us and gave us some of your county disaster funds. It came very timely because one of our vans, the transmission had gone out in, and it was going to be a $7,000 expense, we weren't sure how we were going to get that one operational, so we were allowed to use part of the money for that. And then in addition, we bought 20-pack shelf-stable meals for 200 people in Franklin County and got those distributed, and the idea behind that was if we ever had to close down our kitchen and we couldn't get meals out to the people, they would have a 20-day supply as we have bad weather and sometimes we have ice, we have to close our kitchen, they have their food on hand, or if they simply didn't want to get out, couldn't get out right now doing shopping to supplement the food that they already had, then they would have shelf-stable meals. So, we were very appreciative of that. In addition, I also want to thank Franklin County for stepping up this past year, and I had asked all of my counties to give their fair share for the nutrition program based on meals served, and all of my counties stepped up, but I want to especially thank Franklin because it was a huge increase in your budget, so we are very appreciative of that. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll answer them.
This is Commissioner Dunn, Elizabeth, I want to thank you for your leadership there at the Area Agency on Aging for so many years, I think all the counties served, I really appreciate what you've done there. And I just have one other question, is AAA facilitating the shut-ins to get vaccinated when it becomes available?
You know, what we've done is we've just encouraged everybody to call their counties and get on the waitlist. The Area Agency, I might point out, is very fortunate because we were designated as being healthcare providers, so we have, most everybody in our agency last week got their first vaccine, so we were on that first list, but yeah, we're encouraging everybody across our six counties to call their county, every county's so different in how they're handling it, but we just told them, get on the waitlist and then get your vaccine.
Elizabeth, this is Commissioner Dickinson, I didn't realize that you were retiring, but I know this is, this agency has been a part of your heart for a long time, and I think you're leaving, unfortunately, in the middle of a pandemic, but you're leaving a strong, in a strong position, so I do appreciate your service for these, all these years, and I have been out, and it looks like out at the senior center that they are going to town on that new building, so yeah, I'm sure that the drivers will be happy to have that. Are there any other comments for Elizabeth this morning?
This is Commissioner Stottlemyre, Mrs. Maxwell, I want to thank you, I know I've been around 20 years and I think I'm sure you have too, or more, and it's going to be strange hearing from somebody else, but I'm just glad there's somebody ready to jump in and take the reins like you've handled it for all these years, and appreciate everything, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if we don't have any other comments, thank you again for your report. Thank you very much. All right, Derek, do we have any other correspondence or organizational business?
No ma'am.
All right, Janet, do we have any public comment?
No ma'am.
Okay, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are the minutes from our January 13th meeting, claim vouchers in the amount of $847,046.93, tax change orders in the amount of negative $71.02, approve solicitation of bids for tires, and approve solicitation of bids for culverts. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dunn, a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes. Okay, our first item of business is approve a rezoning application number 2008-1781 Turner Fire Trust to rezone approximately 6.79 acres from an A1 agricultural zoning district to an RE residential estate zoning district, and to rezone approximately 98.07 miles from an A1 agriculture zoning district to an A2 transitional agricultural zoning district, and Larry Walrod, Planning and Zoning Director, you are up.
Good morning Commissioners, this is Larry, this matter is at the request of the Turner Trust to satisfy the distribution of lands amongst the family members after the death of their father. This matter was heard by the Planning Commission in September of last year, however, it's taken some considerable amount of time to get the surveys done to legally describe these tracts of land. The reason that a lot of it was in the flood plain and is subject to some very inclement weather over that timeframe. The Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation to the planning, or the county commissioners to approve the rezoning request, to rezone approximately 6.79 acres from agriculture to the RE residential estate, and to rezone approximately 98 acres to, from the A1 to the A2 transitional, so that it does comply with the county's comprehensive plan and zoning regulations. Staff recommends that you accept that recommendation from the Planning Commission and approve a resolution to rezone these properties and direct staff then to amend our official zoning map accordingly. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions concerning this rezoning request.
Not hearing any questions. We do appreciate, it seems like by the time it gets to us, you've done a lot of vetting of these items that you bring to us and your Planning Commission, we appreciate their work, so if we don't have any questions, then affirmative motion in the support of this item would be, I make a motion to approve rezoning application 2008-1781 to rezone approximately 6.79 acres from an A1 zoning district to an RE zoning district, and to rezone approximately 98.07 acres from an A1 zoning district to an A2 zoning district, and to amend the official county zoning map accordingly. Would anybody like to make that motion?
This is Commissioner Harris.
I'll make the motion. Go ahead.
Commissioner Harris, I'll make a motion to approve, the application is read.
This is Commissioner Stottlemyre, second.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes. Okay, our second order of business is to consider approving solicitation of bids for the 2021 Chip Seal Project, David Lee, Public Works Director.
Good morning Commissioners, this project was slated to be done last year, but due to the uncertainties related to COVID, we elected to postpone that project and we ended up using those dollars to do a large overlay and patching job across the county. So, we need to get back into our regular schedule on chip seal, and we would like to do approximately 50 miles this year, with this effort being centered in the southeast quadrant of the county, with the exception of Colorado Road from basically Old 50 down to the Anderson County line is over in the southwest part of the county. So, we would like to move forward with this, we plan to publish the solicitation of bids in the January 30th newspaper and then- also February 6. We also take the extra step, and we contact a number of companies directly and provide them with the, the information so that they can bid on this project. The idea of being, trying to get as many companies as possible interested in the project, so that hopefully we are successful with the numbers that come back. So I would be happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, I would like to have approval to move forward with this project.
Commissioner Dunn?
Go ahead, Roy.
Okay. David, are you gonna, you gonna have a bid both on the haydye product and the limestone product?
Yes, sir. We will do that, just like we always have. I am leaning towards the haydye product, although we will evaluate the, the bids once they come in to see what is going to be feasible for us.
Okay, thank you.
Dunn, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I think I'm going to go again. David, I know this is kind of a little off the wall, but while I'm thinking about it, where are we at on the, on the north of the bridge there in lane on that project?
That project is scheduled for the April letting. And so I, I haven't, I haven't seen the early start dates or the late start dates for that project. But it should only take a, a month or two for that project to be completed once they get started. The, the plans have been approved by KDOT. And the next step for, for us, we've got to select a, a consultant to do the inspection for us through that process. And I'm communicating with KDOT. They're going to help us get the word out to the, the variety of consultants that are on their approved KDOT list. And so that process will be starting here soon. And we'll, you all will be involved once we get a little bit further down the road with that process.
Thank you.
As far as I know, everything is still on schedule.
Thank you.
It's probably a good time to do it after the weather hopefully breaks for the year?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn, David, is this bid request, is it earlier than we did last year?
It is. I'm, I'm about a month ahead of, of where I was last year. I, I felt like it was important to hopefully be one of the first counties to put out their projects so that hopefully we, the, the actual construction work gets done a little bit earlier in the year. And on that note, I do have a September 13 deadline to complete the project. So this project won't be dragging into late September into October like it has in, in years past. So we'll, you know, while the conditions are still right for this, this kind of work, we'll, we'll be in line to, to get the work done.
Thank you. I'm glad, glad we're doing it.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Dunn, this is Derek. This has been an issue, I think, every year since I have been here. It's a historical complaint that the commissioners have had. Somehow, it seems like we always end up at the back of the line when it comes to the chip seal project. And there have been a couple of years where it's caused some issues with the car show, just because, I remember one year, I think they were slated to chip seal Old 50, but, and then they wanted to do it right around car show time when folks would want to take their vehicles down to Williamsburg, presumably for the ribs down there. And the thought process just is, as David said, maybe getting this in like, you know, as early as possible will lead to, you know, us taking priority over some other organizations. And certainly David is going to stay, whoever ends up winning this bid, I've asked David to stay right on top of them so that we can try and get priority this year. I think we would love to see it wrapped up in the summer months as opposed to stretching into the fall. So we'll see how it goes.
As Commissioner Dunn, that, that's what I was thinking, and I appreciate us doing it this early. Sounded very practical.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. And just for the public's knowledge, in addition to the 2021 chip seal project, we do have at least one project that we didn't get done last year that will get done also on top of this over on Montana. Were they redoing the bridge? Is that the only one we didn't get done last year?
There is both Montana Road north of the, of the new bridge over I-35 up to Marshall Road or 15th Street. That will be overlaid. And then also, LaBette Road from the city limits, and this is LaBette Road north of I-35, where it ties into where the new bridge is, that will, that will be overlaid as well. And so those two projects, I'm, I'm told, will kick off just as soon as they open up the, the asphalt plant in the spring. We should be first on the list.
Do you know where they are at on that bridge project?
They should be done, if not this week, they should be done next week, is my understanding.
Good.
I spoke with the contractor and the inspector here about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, and they were just a few weeks away from being completed with that. I haven't been out there since, but they were awfully close.
Any other questions for David about the chip seal project? An affirmative motion in support of this item would be as follows. I make a motion for the solicitation of bids for the 2021 chip seal project.
This is Commissioner Dunn. I think, I will vote, or I wanted to make the motion to approve this project solicitation.
Is there a second?
It's Dunn, I'll take it.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes. All right. The third item of business is to consider approving solicitation of bids for the 2021 painted pavement marking project. David Lee.
Yes, commissioners. This, each time we do chip and seal, we have a second project where we bid out the pavement markings associated with the, the new chip seal. So this is a, this is needed, and we will, this will be the center stripes and the, the outside white stripes as well. And we would really follow the same procedures. We're going to advertise this a couple of different weeks, and then we will reach out to contact, contractors that we've worked with in the past to, to ask them to bid on this project, and we will provide them all the information. So again, we would ask for your approval to begin that solicitation process.
Commissioner Dunn, just, is there, is there a way to try to get them to commit themselves a certain time, timeframe between the chip and seal project and the actual putting on the paint?
We, we try to, we try to coordinate with them as closely as possible. All, you know, being that they are separate contractors, and we don't have a specific start date for the chip and seal, it's, it's somewhat difficult to, you know, to force the painting contractor to, to be right in behind them. But we do try to shorten that time. One of the things that we have added to our process to, to assist with that is, on the chip and seal project, we have added the, the raised pavement markers to help the traffic. That, those will be applied during the chip seal project. So the, the traveling public will be able to see the center line of the road and the edge of the road until the paint, until the paint is applied. So we do have some precautions. And again, we will work with the contractors to try to limit any lag time between when the chip and seal is put down and the pavement is marked. We do want a little bit of time to pass between the two applications so that the, the traffic can help, so the traffic can help solidify the chip and seal project. And so a few weeks afterwards would be ideal. But again, we'll, we'll work with them to limit that time.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, having the center marker. That was one of the complaints last year, or the year before, was not differentiating the center of the road after the project was done. And I'm glad that's added to this, this process.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if there are no more questions, a affirmative motion in support of this item would read as follows. I make a motion for the solicitation of bids for the 2021 painted pavement marking project.
Whoever got it first, I'll check on it.
The motion, Janet, I hope you have that.
I have Commissioner Dunn as the first. You are the first one I've heard, Commissioner Dunn. And I, the other two were the same time, so if I could get a second, that'd be great.
I'll, Dunn, do it.
Commissioner Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Yes. And our last order of business today is a recognition of employees for their service to Franklin County. Sari Maple, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Sari. And this morning, we're very pleased to recognize our employees for their service to Franklin County. Our employee service awards are given in five-year increments with the service calculation date of December 31st each year. And during 2020, we had 36 employees that reached a milestone year, and will be recognizing 445 combined years of experience, knowledge, expertise, and dedication to serving Franklin County. And as we normally recognize employees in person, this year's a little different because it's a virtual event. But the employees that will be receiving an award or being recognized, they were also invited to listen in today live, or of course, they could also watch the recorded version later. So this morning, we'll have department heads recognize their employees with 10-plus years of service, and then I will announce the employees achieving five years of service. And then there's also a PowerPoint presentation that will be highlighting employees as their service award was delivered by a county commissioner. But if a picture's missing, it could be the employee chose not to have a picture displayed, or the employee may not have been available due to work demands as the employees, I mean, as the awards were delivered. So we'll go ahead and start with Derek, and he can begin the presentation of awards.
Okay, I, I know we have a lot of these to get through, and so I will just say a few words. I have three, well, I have two employees on here, and then one of my bosses is on here. I'll start with Alan Radcliffe. Alan is being recognized for 35 years of service. And I will tell you, that in and of itself is amazing to me. 35 years with, with one employer is phenomenal. And frankly, I think it's something that we're going to see less and less of with subsequent generations. And so I, I think that that is phenomenal. That is a phenomenal tenure with this organization, and that, that's a true public servant. I have worked pretty closely with Alan over the years, and, and I've told him this, but Alan has been involved in, in a couple of the most impressive projects that I have seen since I've been here. The first was the radio system upgrade. There was a lot of work that went into that. A lot of organizations had to upgrade their equipment. And you think about, not just within our own organization, our various departments, but you also have the, the city of Ottawa, the police department, the fire department. You have all of the rural fire departments who, who participated in that upgrade. And then you just had hundreds of dealings with Motorola, all the back and forth. And Alan quarterbacked all of that. And, and it went incredibly smooth. And so that is a project that, that, you know, we all kind of have elevator speeches about what we do and some of the things that, that we've gotten accomplished. That, that is part of my elevator speech. That, that was a terrific project. And then I'm going to talk later today during my staff report about what we were able to do on Saturday in terms of our vaccine efforts. But Alan played a key role in that as well, as he has throughout this pandemic response. So I can't say enough about Alan and his time here. And I think, moving down the list, and I, I may go out of order, Casey can, can click through the PowerPoint here, but I think the next on my list is Commissioner Dunn. Roy is being recognized for 15 years of service. And, and what's noteworthy about Roy's service is it's split into three distinct chunks of time. I, I have 1976 to 1980, 2004 to 2008, and then from 2013 through present day. And obviously, most of the people listening to this call know that I report to the board and, and have a very good understanding of what it is that they do for the organization, the amount of scrutiny that they're under, the amount of criticism they get. For someone like Roy to come back and do this in three distinct timeframes, I, I think says a lot about how much he cares about serving his fellow citizens here in Franklin County. Because I will tell you, the commissioners have a tough job, like, and it is a thankless job. Rarely, you know, do they hear the good things. It's just when, you know, when someone's upset about something, they, they won't hesitate to make that call. But once it gets fixed and is running well, the commissioners don't get that call back thanking them. And so, you know, I, kudos to Roy for, for being able to do that. And then obviously, he's been on board over the last several years. And I said the same thing about Commissioner Howard back in his last meeting. I'll say the same thing about Roy. Roy's been a phenomenal commissioner to work with. He's been open-minded. We have not grown the organization per se, but we have definitely improved it. We've improved our facilities. We've improved our roads. We've improved staff morale. And we're definitely, I, I think, you know, we're an organization that's on the upswing, and, and we wouldn't be there without commissioners like Roy Dunn. So Roy, thank you very much for, for all that you've done. And then the third employee, the final employee that I am recognizing is Jamie Wilson. Jamie, obviously, is the county appraiser. He's being recognized for 10 years of service. Jamie is in a, it's another very, very thankless position. I, I think that his role is among I, I think that his role is among the most misunderstood in the entire organization. I think that so many people see their taxes go up, and they think, well, I'm going to call that county appraiser. Well, the county appraiser doesn't have anything to do with taxes. County appraiser deals with valuation and, and, you know, helping set a, a home's value, and when they do that, they do it on market trends. Like, I, I think so many folks out there think that, that our appraiser just sits in an office and, you know, pulls a slot machine and a value comes up, and, and he arbitrarily assigns it. That is not at all what Jamie Wilson does. Having observed him, he takes a, a market approach, and he does a fantastic job. I don't want to get too down into the weeds on the technicalities, but Jamie's been a great appraiser. He has had to do some commercial appraising, and, and we don't do a lot of that here in Franklin County. And, and there were some struggles, but he persevered through that and has really just turned into a great employee. And I don't know that, that the public realizes this, but appraisers are hard to find. And there aren't a lot of people out there that, that want to be an appraiser. And so the fact that we have a good one when there are so few of them in the state is something that I'm very grateful for. So again, Jamie, thank you for your, your 10 years of service. And, and Sari, I believe that is all I have on my list.
David Lee, do you want to go ahead and jump in?
Yes, ma'am. It is, it is a, it's my pleasure to really recognize four of my really foundational pieces of the Public Works Department. First, we have Larry Farrar. Larry is, it, it, it's safe to say that Larry has installed, repaired, or replaced every one of our over 15,000 signs at least once in his 30 years of service to Franklin County. Larry approaches his job with purpose and dedication while always maintaining a sense of humor. Although we all know that he would much rather be out fishing than, than working any day, but he does a wonderful job for us. Next, we have Darren Rocker. There is not much that Mr. Rocker has not experienced in his 25 years as an operator with the Franklin County Transfer Station and Landfill. He is highly skilled and incredibly efficient in his job, and quite frankly, Darren is a cornerstone of our landfill operation. Next, we have Darrell Macy Jr. Darrell has spent the first half of his, half of his career working as a sign technician with Larry, and over the last 10 years or so, he's been a heavy equipment operator and truck driver for us. And finally, we have Rusty Toll. Rusty has spent most of his 20 years as a blade operator maintaining the district north of Pomona. He is an excellent equipment operator and is actually one of the people that we rely on the most to help train our new personnel. Rusty is a, is a stalwart in our blade operator group. And each one of those folks are very important to our organization, both from a department and a overall organization. So I very much appreciate those folks.
This is Sheriff Richards. I, it looks like I'm up now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The first employee that we have at the Sheriff's Office to recognize is Tammy Alexander. And Tammy has been with the, the county for 25 years. She has served in a wide variety of positions with the Sheriff's Office. She currently is a corporal in the jail, which means that she's a supervisor, runs a team in there, and takes on a lot of additional duties as far as the management of that facility. Prior to that, she served quite a few years as a detective, and she's been a road deputy as well. She's a, yeah, just a vital part of the Sheriff's Office, and we appreciate the 25 years that she put in. And I'm sure some days it feels, she feels every day of those 25 years, and some days, I think that she's mentioned that it has flown by. So, but we appreciate what she's done. The next person to recognize is Jason Bryan, who has 20 years of service. Jason is a sergeant assigned to the Patrol Division. And again, he's also done, done a variety of things through his 20 years here as well. Most notably, I'll say that he has spent time on the, on our SWAT team, on the STAR team, where he serves as a sniper. And he is a retired Army, and so he's taken some of his, some of the skills that he has, that he attained there, and is helping, helping the county out with putting those to use here as well. And we appreciate all that Jason does for the Sheriff's Office as well. The next employee is Vicki Eckert, who is, who's been here for 20 years as well. She did not spend all of those 20 years here at the Sheriff's Office. We stole her from Emergency Management a few years ago, and we're glad we did that. Sorry, Alan, for, for doing that to you. But Vicki takes care of a lot of our accounts payable and makes sure that our, she keeps us online with our budgets and, and then does a variety of other administrative tasks there in the office. And she, she's vital to, to what we do here, and it keeps us on track as well, and we appreciate what Vicki does for, for Franklin County. The next employee that to recognize is Carl Bentley. And Carl has been with Franklin County for 15 years. He's been here at the Sheriff's Office, served in a variety of, of roles as well, from patrol deputy, and he helped run a patrol team as a supervisor for a while. He's a corporal here, and he was in our Drug Enforcement Unit for several years, and he currently serves on the Northeast Kansas Drug Task Force as a detective, which is part of the reason you don't see a picture of him. But Carl does great work. This is a unique position where they carry federal credentials and things, and so the level of service that he provides is, is, is top-notch, and we, we appreciate what Carl does here. The next employee we have is Troy Sprinkle. And Troy has been with Franklin County for 15 years as well. Currently serves as a court security deputy. He has also served at a variety of roles through the, through the time he's been a patrol deputy, and, and I believe he served as an SRO for a while in the schools. And Troy over at District Court there in court security operates kind of like a, like the training officer over there, and he's, he's, he's reliable and does good work over there and helps mentor the, the new guys. So we appreciate what Troy does for the Sheriff's Office as well. Our next employee is Jeremy Thompson. Jeremy Thompson has also been with us for 15 years. Jeremy is a corporal in the Detective Division. He, he has also served in, in different capacities. He was a drug detective in the Drug Enforcement Unit for several years, and he has served on our, on the STAR team. And he is also a trained hostage negotiator. And he, he does good work, he's very reliable. We appreciate what he's done, and some of the skills that he brings to the table, especially with negotiations, has really helped keep the public and law enforcement officers safe. And so his dedication has been very beneficial to us, and we appreciate that. The next employee that we have here is Hunter Dryden. Hunter's been with us for 10 years. Hunter is, is originally from Texas, and he was brought up here by Ottawa University to play football and liked the community here, and then he came to work here at the Sheriff's Office once he graduated from OU. He's, he's a corporal right now, and he is also a dog handler. And so in those capacities, he's, serves in a high-profile position there with the dog, with doing demonstrations, and then a lot of the searches and things that are done there. And as a corporal, he's on the team that he's on, he would be, he's like the assistant chef supervisor. So we appreciate the leadership and the service that Hunter provides to us as well. And then the last employee that I have to recognize today is Tanner Hendrickson. Tanner has also been with Franklin County for 10 years and currently is a corporal and also a dog handler. And Tanner has also been on our, on the STAR team for, for a while, and with his dog does a lot, does a lot of high-profile cases as well. We recently had started a CAT team, it's a Community Action Team. It's a, it's kind of a new approach to how we do some of our drug enforcement and high-risk enforcement things, and Tanner is the corporal assigned to that team. And he does a great job for us, he's very dedicated, and we appreciate the experience that he has. He's also a, an Army veteran, so he helps bring some of those skills from there over as well, and so we appreciate what he does. And I just want to say that out of, out of the eight employees that we recognize today, it's a lot of years of service. I believe I had 130 years of service just in these, in these people. And it's, each, each member we have is vital to, to getting our mission accomplished and to every day, just getting the work done. So we really appreciate what each of them bring to the table.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, sorry, I forgot to unmute this thing. Yeah, so first up, we've got Joyce Dulce. Joyce recently retired, but she was with us for 20 years. There's a, there's a lot I could say about, about Joyce. She, she put in a lot of, a lot of effort into her job here and did a, did a fantastic job as a custodian, you know, keeping our buildings clean and keeping them safe for everybody. You know, Joyce, she always wanted to, she just wanted to help people. Just had a real, kind of a servant heart that way, and, and, you know, if there's, if there's one idea or one quality that really set Joyce apart from, from others and kind of defined her employment here, it's that she set extremely high standards for herself. And that, that really showed in how she, how she kept things clean, how she wanted to help everybody, how she, just kind of who she was as a, as a person working here with us. We're really sad to see her go, but glad that she's enjoying her retirement after, again, 20 years working here. Next, we've got Mark Falls. He's been here for 15 years. Mark, you know, being, being somewhere for, for 15 years or so, you know, that's, there's a, definitely a level of devotion that you've got to have to that employer to stay there that long. As many of you may know, Mark, he likes hitting up the garage sales around town, and he loves showing off whatever he's found. He finds some rare things sometimes, fossils and war memorabilia and just all kinds of cool stuff. He's always bringing in something new that he's found. But specifically to his work here, Mark really kind of takes up, taking care of the plants and flowers and stuff that we've got around the courthouse. In the spring and summer, you'll see all those nice colors out there in front of the building, and that's all Mark. He, he really goes to town on all that and, and really takes pride in making the courthouse look, look really, really nice. So we appreciate all the work that Mark does, and especially all those plants out front. Looking forward to more time with him and, and being able to share more memories for his next, his next milestone for years of service.
All right, well, I guess it's me now. This is kind of a, a highlight to a lot of things, talking about the next three individuals. I have actually hired and been the chief of these individuals since their career. So we'll start with Mike. Mike Hasty started with us. He came from Johnson County, where he was a medic and wanted to get into a more rural setting. The thing about Mike that stands out is Mike's a Marine, and when he was overseas, he had two, in his interview, we talked about how to deal with conflict. And Mike talked about having two individuals that didn't see eye to eye, and he made them fill sandbags and move one side of the base to the other side until they got along, and that stood out for Mike since day one. We've joked about it. So I, I appreciate Mike's leadership. Mike's very calm, under pressure, and does a good job. So I want to thank Mike for his 15 years Franklin County and all he's done. Moving on to Kristy. Kristy's first job at EMS was at Franklin County. She started here right after she completed her paramedic in Johnson County, and, and stuck here to make this a career. And it, it's been fun to watch Kristy grow. Kristy, like I said, was a medic. She moved her way into the captain position. Kristy has always been able to step in and do things. She is our infection control officer, and one of her accomplishments that she wanted to do with that is to make a countywide infection control plan, and just recently got that completed last year. And then with the pandemic, we haven't been able to roll it out solid, but she takes great pride in that. Kristy moved into her division chief position over operations, and now is the assistant chief of the ambulance service. So honestly, the best right hand I can ask for in, in this, in this job. She stepped up during COVID and taken on a lot of roles. She's also running the operations at EMS, so Kristy is a great employee, and we're lucky to have her. And the last employee I have to recognize is Louise Bardwell. Louise came to us from Miami County. She was here for a few years, and Louise's strongest passion is education. Louise loves to do education, and she took a job with Johnson County and went up there and worked in their education department. She was over the training for all the fire departments in Johnson County. Louise then came back to Franklin County as a paramedic. She worked her way into captain, and now Louise is filling the division chief of education for Franklin County. She just started her first AEMT class, and I am very excited to see where Louise takes our education department to. So those are my three employees, and I'm very proud of every one of them.
And then our employees that are celebrating five years of service, there's Sally Crane, which is our deputy county appraiser in the Appraisers' Office. We have Scott Dickinson, which is in the Sheriff's Office. He is our chaplain in the jail. We have Buddy Griffin, which is a heavy equipment operator in Roden Bridge in Public Works. Megan Groenau, which is a case manager in Community Corrections. Vicki Hughes is our deputy register of deeds in the register, register of deeds office. Brandon Jones is our county attorney in the attorney's office. Erin Laurie is our interim assistant health director in the Health Department. Chelsea Massington is the legal assistant two in the attorney's office. John Moore is a heavy equipment operator two in Roden Bridge. Chelsea Massington is the legal assistant two in the attorney's office. John Moore is a heavy equipment operator two in Roden Bridge in Public Works. Andrew Putnam is a corporal in the sheriff's office. Todd Rhodes is our assistant director of juvenile services. Kelly Thompson is a clerk three in Public Works. AJ Watts is a light equipment operator in Public Works in Roden Bridge. Kelsey Wilson is detention center supervisor for juvenile services. And Tom Winter is our emergency management coordinator in emergency management. So we congratulate all of the recipients.
Thank you, Sari. If you don't see me, my phone is about ready to die and so I'm trying to get a charger. We do appreciate all these employees. They have really served our county. I appreciated the pictures too. Casey, that was awesome to put those up there. I noticed that Mr. Dryden is about the only, Hunter Dryden is about the only person that can look down on Commissioner Dunn. I didn't know if any other commissioners wanted to make a comment?
Well, this is Commissioner Dunn and I just want to thank Sari. And I really appreciate the words Derek said on my behalf. You know, it's always been an honor to serve as a county commissioner and an honor to represent the third district. And I just, I just appreciate all the, all the commissioners I worked with over the years. We've all been positive. We all got along. And we all worked for the betterment of Franklin County. Some of I asked, what the heck I was doing in 1976 for the county? Well, I started out in the ambulance service for three years and went to PA school with an Army National, Kansas Army National Guard. So if I stayed on from 76 to now, I would have, I would have beat Alan Radcliffe in time, sir. But it was quite a big lifetime between then and when I became a commissioner. So just pray, just appreciate all the employees and the amount of years that served Franklin County. That's all I have, Ian.
Yeah, I, I always appreciate people staying with you and not because it's a job, because they want to be here. And, and it's kind of like with Alan. And most people don't know that he was a maintainer operator for the county for a few years between the sheriff's office and emergency management. So that's probably a rare quality. Most emergency management directors have is being able to operate a maintainer. So that's all I have.
If it was not, if this is Commissioner Dickinson, if it wasn't, if it was not a COVID year, we would be having a nice reception and our chairs would be full of people congratulating these employees. I promise you, there is no food here, but hopefully when COVID is over, we'll be able to come together and really celebrate our employees. We do appreciate them. Okay, we're going to move on to commissioner or to staff reports. Start with Derek.
All right. Thanks, Ian. We want to jump right into our COVID response. And I'll start with a vaccination update. So as of Monday, we'd administered 600 doses of the vaccine. Certain groups, we've pretty well got fully taken care of. That includes public health. That includes our ambulance service. Other medical first responders have had the opportunity and have been vaccinated. The healthcare associated workers in this community. So those at the hospital, your dentists, your optometrists have all had the opportunity to be vaccinated. Individuals who we have deemed critical to our COVID response have all been vaccinated at this point. And then on Saturday, we started administering doses to the general public. And as I've said on here before, we are starting with the list. We've been encouraging people to call in and get signed up. And then we take that list and, and we arrange it by age and we have started with our oldest individuals. So on Saturday, we gave 200 doses to individuals who are over the, the age of 80. And, and I want to talk about that a little bit. You know, it's funny, I, I get a little insecure sometimes because I feel like my staff reports have just turned into me just doing a whole lot of complimenting my people and the organization. And, but, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't discuss this effort. And I told the individuals who were there on Saturday this. This is hands down the most impressive thing that, that I have been a part of during my time with the organization. And this is single-handedly. So you, you talk about the five of you county commissioners and, and obviously you're doing it because you, you want to better the community. You want to make your constituents happy. I have never gotten, and certainly I will encourage Nick to talk about this as well. We'll give Casey the opportunity to talk about it. I have never been a part of something where we receive more compliments and more praise than we did on Saturday. This population was so incredibly thankful for the opportunity to do this. And not only that, but, but they were thankful for the way that we had it organized. We ran people through efficiently. There was no wait times. We ran people through safely. We had them plenty spaced out and, and it was just a fantastic effort all around. I will not be able to, to recite the names of every individual there. But what I can say is certainly the, the usual suspects that I would consider part of my COVID team were all there. You know, Alan Radcliffe, Tom Winter, Nick Robbins, Kristy Hilliker, Casey Brady, Erin Laurie. All of them were giving up their time with their family on a Saturday to be there doing this. And, and we had people there from about 7:00 AM to about 4 ish, 4:00 PM. And so they put in a full day. We did it over at the middle school gymnasium and we made sure before we walked out that door that there was not a trace that would indicate that we had been there. So I can't say enough about this group. And, and I hope Nick will give specific praise to the nursing staff that we had there. And we even had two employees from OFP who showed up and, and they kind of ran the check in and, and they were perfect. They were the perfect ladies for that because they were so warm and welcoming. And I just felt like I had just set the whole dynamic. Because it was just, it was, I, I can't say enough. I'm kind of speechless. It was just a good environment. Everyone was pleasant and so very pleased with how that went. And the good news is we now have a template for that. We've been told that we've got another 300 doses. I don't know that we have been given a specific date on that and Nick might know that. But we've got the template now and so I think we'll be able to start pushing this out pretty efficiently. So that, that's really all that I have. Nick, do you want to jump in?
If I can get off mute. I want to echo what Derek said. I have been in public service for 25 years and I don't think I've ever been involved with something as much that, that gives me as much gratitude for the job we do as this. I will tell you, it was, it was interesting to see the tears that were shed by this population that had the opportunity to get out. And you know, you look at the vaccine clinic that we just did, we vaccinated 200 individuals from 84 years old to 104 years old. And, and when we vaccinated first responders, when we vaccinated medical community, we traditionally had extra doses because people weren't able to get there or something would come up. So we put a waiting list of 10 people and honestly, we had 199 individuals show up. The only one that couldn't show up ended up hospitalized. But two, roughly 200 people that said they would be there were there. And some of the people on the waiting list showed up hopeful that they would get it. So the response was, was awesome. But I want to share something just because it speaks volumes to this community with the commission doing, what Derek's doing. Some places are charging for this vaccine. And there was an individual who had heard that in other, other, other states or other counties, it was a $45 administration fee. And she told one of the girls, how much do I owe you? And when they told her it was nothing, she broke out in tears because she saved $45 from her fixed income to be able to get this vaccine. And I thought right there, if that doesn't touch everybody, there, there's something wrong. But that, the girl did a great job. We had Chelsea, who we just hired as a full-time nurse in the health department. She's taken the vaccine clinic and I've asked her to run it along with Erin help schedule. And she did a great job. We've had Mandy, we had Maya, we had Liz come in for a little bit, help draw doses. We had Ashley from EMS. We have Ashley and Michaela from OFP. They also work part-time for us doing swabbing and helping us in the testing. They've been wonderful throughout this. The, the process went great and I don't want to continue to talk too much about it, but I will tell you that if you have an opportunity to come and witness any of the ones that we do in the future, they're, they're very, very good to see how it works out. As Derek talked about, we articulated to get 300 doses of vaccine this week. It looks like at the initial point of the vaccine distribution, they were looking at going through the health partnership clinics. It seems that the new transition will be that the health departments will start getting this versus the health partnerships. So we're hopeful that we'll start seeing more doses roll in as we, as we push forward through the next couple of weeks. Exciting part about today is we are giving second shots. So anybody that was in that first 60 people that got, for our first 60 doses and then our, our next 250 and then we'll wrap up the 200 that we gave on February 13th. So from today to February 13th, not only are we looking at primary or first administrations, we're now on our second administrations of this, of these doses. So pretty exciting times there. With that, I will just give you some quick statistics on COVID and where we're at. Right now in the county, we have 2,036 reported positive cases from the beginning of, of this. Interesting things, we've had 244 positives in January. That's a 12.49%. If you look at December to December 20th, we had 421, which is 20%. So we are down in percentages. We've seen a, a decrease. You look over the last two weeks and when you look at nursing homes, and you probably remember me talking about this when, when, at the beginning, when nursing homes had to do testing every week or bi-weekly, they used a matrix where we were green, yellow and red. For the first time in months, we are down into the yellow on positivities over the last two weeks at a 9.6% positivity rate. So those are, are kind of refreshing things to see. But I, I think it's also kind of messed up a little bit because we haven't seen the testing that we were doing in December. We, we've seen a decrease in testing. We've seen a lot of people saying that we're going to quarantine versus test. And that, I think messes with the numbers a little bit. You look at our outline, testing places and I've talked about these. We've got one in Pomona, one in Ottawa. So far Pomona has tested 349 individuals. And remember that's Coffee County, Osage County, you name it, the counties around us. They're not all Franklin County. We've seen 275 negatives and 33 positives. And then they have been 25 rejected from there and 16 that are at the lab at this time. The Ottawa location is 498 for negatives. They've found 80 positives. 13 have been rejected, 16 are to lab for a total of 606. So those two locations have picked up some of the testing of asymptomatic individuals. So allow the health department to really focus on the vaccine and where we're going to go with that. With that, that's what my report is today. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I, Commissioner, oh, go ahead, Ian.
I was just going to say, this is Commissioner Dickinson. I, I don't have a question, but I do have one comment. I'm really proud of the fact that this has really been at, across the, the whole Franklin County effort. Cause even HR was making phone calls to those 200 people to set up appointments for them to come in and get their shot. EMS was here when I got my shot, as well as the health department. So all across the board, we're all getting on board.
This, this is Derek and one last thing I would say and just for perspective. Coffee County isn't even administering this vaccine or they weren't as of last week. And I will tell you, the, the, there are a large number of citizens over there that are outraged at that fact. Anderson County, our understanding is, is basically once they are, get a shipment in, they are just somehow going to post notice and then it is a first come, first serve in terms of administering this, which if you really think that through, I mean, they're going to potentially create a super spreader event while trying to administer the vaccine. Just because if you, you know, you've got 100 doses and, you know, several hundred show up, you know, how are you going to manage that? And certainly, you know, I don't run those organizations and, and my point is not at all to criticize them. They are set up very, very differently than Franklin County is. But I, I just want the five of you commissioners and the people that we serve to have perspective here. You know, we've built a standard and certainly, you know, we aspire to do everything up to that standard. But there are counties across this entire state that are faring so much worse and that are having logistic issues that we just don't have. And, and that kind of comes full circle back to our employees who we recognized earlier. Like we, we couldn't be in this position. It literally could not happen without our people. And so I would urge the five of you to not take those people for granted. And I'm certain that you don't. So, so that's all I have, Ian. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Sheriff Richards. Does you have anything to share?
Yes, I just share that we, this week, we had a, we have a new employee, Colton Bossy, that has started at the, as a corrections officer in our jail. We, and we currently have a hiring process still going there. We have a couple openings there, mostly because of, we have an employee that also goes to college. And so having to change status from full-time to part-time. So that's kind of created some, created a vacancy there for us. But we do have a good process going and I, again, as has been said with compliments to other departments, but I also, I just wanted to express my appreciation to HR for what they, how they put together the employee appreciation and, and working with Sari and her staff. the employee appreciation and, and working with Sari and her staff on a variety of projects to include our hiring processes has been, it has been a good experience and I really appreciate the help that they've, that they give us. So that's all I have today unless you guys have any questions for me.
Hi Ian, this is Derek. I'm going to jump in again because one thing that both Nick and I neglected to mention was that the sheriff had a couple of folks out there on Saturday. When I showed up that morning, a, a sheriff's deputy was actually standing there and opened the door for me. And so the sheriff had a presence there, two different employees, Jake Geist and Curtis Hall were both there. So we definitely appreciate the sheriff allowing his folks to stop by and participate in that. I know that, you know, it seemed like both of them enjoyed being there and we definitely enjoyed having them. So Jeff, I appreciate that.
You bet, thank you.
All right, let's move on to David Lee.
Good morning. So last week, our road bridge crews, we were able to repair several culverts and added riprap in several ditch locations on Riley Road west of Idaho. And we spent a fair amount of time cutting and removing trees that fell during the, oh, the winter weather event that we had last week. We had trees down really all over the county due to the high winds. And so we, we spent a good, good bit of time taking care of those. We also had a skeleton crew that worked late Friday night, worked till about 9:30. They were out taking care of snowdrifts in the northern part of the county. They seemed to be, got hit the hardest and the snow lasted the longest. So we were up there pushing snow and, and setting out some material. We also, last week I mentioned that we had three motor graders that had broke down. We had staff that were, worked with Foley equipment on Saturday and then again on Monday to make sure that our, our equipment was back up and running. So they, they did that Saturday and Monday and, and we were fully ready to go Tuesday when the guy showed up to work. Today, we're, we've got a crew that is starting on a dishing project on the south side of LaBette, just west of Eisenhower. So that's been a project that's been on our list for a while and we're finally able to get to it. Also of notes, if you recall, late last year, we declared several items for surplus and we went through the auction process. We used Gavel Roads to do that auction. That wrapped up yesterday and we should be receiving a check for just over $26,500 in the coming days. We were able to sell all of our surplus items. So that is a, we feel like that was a success. This, Gavel Roads has been a new provider for us. In the past, we've used a different provider. The difference being Gavel Roads promised to kind of handle all the details and handle all the calls. My staff told me that in, in past years when we've done these auctions, they would need to field 10 to 15 calls per item throughout the course of the time that the items were up on the auction board. This time around, we took a total of four different calls about very specific things that wouldn't have been in the ordinary list of information for the equipment. So we, we felt like this was a huge success for us and we plan to probably use Gavel Roads for future auctions. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Not hearing any. I'll move on to Larry Wellrod. Did you have anything that you wanted to share?
I really have nothing this morning, other than the fact that we've caught a number of items on the planning commission's agenda for this month, which is Thursday night's meeting and also for next month. So we're quite busy with all kinds of issues ranging from rock wires to whatever. So we're, we're kind of under the gun, but frankly, we're weathering the storm so far. Thanks.
Okay, Janet Patoc.
I don't have anything today, thank you.
All right.
Janet.
Yes.
I got a question for you.
Sure.
Do you know anything on the proposed tax bill 13 in the Senate today on tax lid?
Sure, that hearing has been moved to next week due to concerns of unrest today up at the Capitol. There had been some, some discussion about some action possibly being at the, at the Capitol building today. So they've moved that hearing to next week. I am working with not only my association, but with some local legislators and some other local taxing entities that are concerned about this also, to provide information to legislators so they can hopefully make an informed decision about handling this moving forward. So I am watching it. The bill is, for those of you who don't know, Senate Bill 13 is the tax bill that was brought last year by Senator Tyson and that bill is much the same this year. It's commonly dubbed truth and transparency and it does have some good things in it, but largely, I, there's a large group that doesn't believe that it's going to do what it's supposed to be. It does remove the current tax lid as written that we are currently abiding under and they hope that this will take the place of that and work better than that. However, there are a lot of concerns with it and how it will actually be implemented. The largest concern for counties is that the bill is planned to take place, to start this year with our budget for 2022 and the programming issues alone that we will have to get ready and get in place by June. And if you know anything about any software systems that are countywide that deal with all the different taxing authorities that we deal with, you know, whether that be cities, extension, cemetery districts, fire districts, any of that, it's very difficult to put in a new, a new piece into our software program and generate the documents that they're requiring that I would send out prior to, to anyone setting any tax levies because I would have to notify each taxing authority what their revenue neutral rate is. So we're working feverishly on that because this bill is proposing that this would start for the 2020 budget, very concerning to us. Additionally, if anyone goes over their revenue neutral rate, then I would be required to send out a mailer on their behalf that they would pay for, which is very challenging in the fact that multiple districts that overlap each other could potentially send out these statements to the same individuals and it would be up to me to not only send them out, but to decide how much each taxing authority would be responsible to pay. And there's no clear guidance in the legislation on how that would be divided, just merely says that it would be up to the county clerk to decide who pays what. Also, it only allows in the statute for postage and printing and there's a lot of concern whether postage and printing includes staff time because as you know, if I have to send out a mailer countywide, that's, you know, 15,000 mailers, envelope stuffing time, all of those things. I, we cannot currently get that done with the staff that we have. We are not staffed to send out multiple mailers each year. So I am working on getting costs for those all put together for, again, those legislators that have requested that information. So lots of work going on behind the scenes. As you remember, the tax bill last year passed and then was vetoed. So I, it looks pretty favorable to pass again, although like I said, we have a lot of concerns that we're hoping to get addressed prior to this going to the House floor.
Janet, this is Derek. What does the bill say about taxing new improvements?
That's a huge concern to us, that they do not allow for any, any new improvement value. Our current tax bill, the tax lid as we refer to it, allows for new improvement values. So when we have a new business come in and build, you know, several million dollars worth of, you know, buildings, that we would require our infrastructure to be put in place, like we have our industrial park, we are no longer allowed to capitalize on new improvement values, which as you guys know as commissioners, that is how we recoup our, our costs for infrastructure is by getting the tax benefit on new improvement value, but we will no longer be able to capitalize on that. So it's dollar for dollar is what the tax bill says. If you, if you levy taxes for $100,000 in 2021, you can't lobby for $100,001 in 2022 or you're subject to this notification process, which is mailing out to every single one of your taxpayers.
So, and I don't, I, I know that everyone is still developing an understanding of this bill and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, but certainly when you think about Proximity Park and, and when you talk to the people that were really the, the pushing force behind Proximity Park and, and the city and the county, those commissioners that approved moving forward with Proximity Park, one of the, the things that continually got said was growing the tax base, growing the tax base. Like we, we have got to grow the tax base here so that this community survives. Is it your understanding that this bill that is in the Senate would prevent us from being able to do that?
Yeah, it, well, it, it does allow, the tax base is going to grow whether we allow it or not, if we're bringing in these businesses, but we're no longer allowed to capitalize on the additional revenue that would come in from these businesses, even though we're required to provide additional services when a new business comes in, like, like the roads that we built out in the new Proximity Park. We built the roads out in the new Proximity Park to attract new businesses with the intent that when those new businesses came, we would pay off the debt that we incurred to do the roads and then we would start giving the benefit back to our taxpayers after the improvements were paid off. But now that has to sit with our taxpayers without any benefit from that, that new business until it's all paid off and we're getting no benefit from the new businesses that we're hoping to attract. Furthermore, the state has control over tax exemptions and so a business can come in and ask the state for tax exemptions where they're, they would not be paying taxes for a period of time and we would be providing additional services to those businesses, hence providing an additional burden on our taxpayers. So I'm not sure what the incentive to attract new businesses are. Like I said, I've already talked to Senator Tyson about this. She knows my concerns about costs to implement this into our system. She knows my concern that this, that doing this all this year is a concern. I did have conversations with Senator Tyson about this and this has passed out of the Senate. So I am in contact with our representative and, and hopefully, you know, we can see some changes to this bill before it passes out of the House.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. And yeah, suffice to say, the Kansas Association of Counties, the Clerks Association has very large concerns with this bill, at least the way that it's drafted. And so it's something that we are going to talk about more moving forward and certainly we hope that our local representatives work with us on, you know, if, if this bill, if it's something that is going to pass, then certainly we hope it is tweaked to make it more workable for obviously what we're trying to accomplish here at the local level. And so we'll have more dialogue on that as the session continues. Thank you.
I, I would just like to say one more thing, commissioners. You know that Derek and I are extremely focused on transparency. I have invited on numerous occasions, anyone from the public that wants to come in and discuss the budget with me. I am always happy to do that, to sit down with anyone who has questions regarding what different lines in our budget go to. Unlike many, many counties across Kansas, we have for a long time put our meetings, meeting videos out on the internet so that our citizens can see these meetings even if they're not able to come. In addition to publishing all of our budgets, all of our audits, all of that information out on our webpage for our citizens to view. So I think we strive as a county for transparency, even without a tax bill that requires it. So that's hard for me to, that doesn't sit well with me when someone is forcing us to be transparent when we are actively trying to be transparent anyways.
Okay, thank you for that report Janet. Let's move on, Casey Brady.
Ian, I don't have anything to add today, thank you.
All right, thank you. I think Sari Maple, are you still on?
I'm here. I don't have anything to add either, thanks Ian.
Okay, all right. If we have nothing else, we'll move on to commissioner comments and board reports. Start with Don Stottlemyre.
Thank you, Ian. The subject I just brought up on the Senate Bill 13, I mean, I know people sometimes don't want to go that far, but this is the exact reason, the exact reason I've brought up several times, that we need to invite our elected officials once a year to come in and speak to us so we can face-to-face grievance, our problems and issues we have. I mean, you know, yeah, Janet's doing the very best she can, but she's only one person and, and if, she's only got one vote, she's only one person, but all of us commissioners and the rest of us, even our appraiser and everybody else can be there and confront the people that are trying to pass these things and let them know how we feel and what we expect them to try and least look at our issues and problems. And that's, and, and we used to do that. We used to bring in our elected officials once a year and discuss issues that were coming up and be able to approach them about things that we either agree with or disagree with. So that's all I have.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yeah, thanks Ian. I did go to a coffee last Friday for Chris Patton of COF. His 10 year anniversary with COF, running that organization, done an excellent job and he was recognized at that coffee sponsored by The Chamber. We had it out at Crawford Center so everybody could do the COVID protocol and be there. Also I had a ECAN board meeting last night and we discussed the future of going forward as far as ECAN goes and, and the past and getting the response, their response for COVID-19 and handling that and all their projects. for COVID-19 and handling that, and all their projects, and everything's going pretty good for ECAN. Also, just a little comment about our health department. I talked to some friends around the country, including Florida, and, and I've been really impressed that we are ahead in doing things in a logical, orderly matter here in Franklin County. My friend in Florida said, they're not doing anything like that where he's at. He's pretty disappointed in the state and the county he lives in. So our county is really handling that response excellently, and I really appreciate that. I did talk to a person from Douglas County about the Senate tax bill and, and the, you know, revenue zero part of it, and, and of course, he thought that was pretty logical, because as valuations go up, then the mill levy should go down and create a net zero effect on, you know, the amount you paid. And I said, well, it's, it's a lot more than just that, the revenue zero. And I said also that we are very transparent in our county, because if you want to know what the budget is, you just go to our website, and it has everything in there. So I think we're doing that the right way, too. And I agree with Don Stottlemyre, that maybe we do need to, it'd be good to get our representative and senator to come to our meeting and, and explain stuff like this tax bill, since our senator was a main sponsor of it. So I think that would be a good, good idea for us. That's all I have, Ian. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes, I don't, I don't have anything to add today, Ian, but thanks for covering on that, Roy.
Okay, then, this is Commissioner Dickinson. I, I would say that I think that they are still planning on having a legislative coffee. I'm not sure how they're going to do it through, starting in January, February, and March, so that might be a good time for us to get hold of our legislators to share our concerns. I didn't go to anything this week. The inauguration is happening as we speak, and hopefully, when the inauguration is over, our legislators will be ready to start turning to other things, hopefully, including COVID response. So we look forward to that. Otherwise, we have a county, school district, city meeting, COVID meeting at noon today, a study session scheduled for Monday, and our next regular session will be next Wednesday. If nobody has anything else, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So. Hang on, Rod. I have a question about that luncheon. I was a little confused about it from a school district. How's that going to work, Derek?
It's not a luncheon, it's just a meeting. So it's just a Zoom meeting at noon. There is no luncheon.
Well, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought, and I don't know if I'll be able to be at that Zoom meeting. So I may be there and I might not.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Just, just if you're available.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Good fun.